Chairman of Lee County Board Committee, I call the meeting to order, obviously, the fifth day of February 2007, to conduct all business which would be properly brought before the body. First order of business will be our invocation by Mr. Hall, and then remain standing for the committee's leave.
Good morning. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We ask that you help us to use it wisely and well. We ask our Father your blessings upon all assembled here. We thank you for the work that we have to do together, and we pray you to give us the grace to persevere in it and through it to serve both you and the citizens of this county. We ask that you strengthen the men and women in our armed forces, keep them temperate in all things that they may serve without stumbling and without staying, protect them in their service on behalf of our nation. We ask our Father you will bless the leaders of our nation, state, county, enable them to serve people of this community. In thy name, our Father, help us to be an instrument in the building of thy kingdom. For we ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, recognizing Mr. Jerry for his reputation as Employee of the Month.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the employee of the One Selection Committee has selected Sergeant Carol Petty at the Lee County Sheriff's Office as Employee of the Month of February 2007. Sergeant Petty has worked for Lee County for 24 years and is currently employed as a Supervising Communication Dispatcher. Sergeant Petty is an employee who knows her job and knows how to deal with people and should be commended for her ability to remain calm during difficult situations. She provides effective communication to officers in the field and to the public, whether emergency or non-emergency calls. Her calm demeanor is very much appreciated as she has demonstrated a natural ability to calm people down during emergency situations, to get them focused in order to get the information needed, to provide them the services they need. It was stated in the nomination that Ms. Petty deserves to be considered as Employee of the Month because she assumes a tremendous responsibility in her role as a lifeline to the sheriff department's officers and the public. And while numbers are not kept, it is unknown as to the number of people she has served and/or saved during her years of service. Sergeant Petty's personality, people skills, and communication skills stand as an example on how all county departments can support each other to accomplish a greater goal. The committee felt that based on the recommendation and Sergeant Petty's commitment, she should be awarded Employee of the Month. Therefore, the committee respectfully asks that you join us in awarding Sergeant Carol Petty Employee of the Month of February 2007.
Sergeant Petty, do you have anything to say? Don't get me your speech, man.
Well, I'm really honored to accept this on behalf of not only myself, but as a child of a law enforcement officer, and also on behalf of my brother, I thank him for attending. And I really enjoy my job. There are a lot of things that can be done and should be done to help our community, and I will strive for the present, the past, and the future to continue to do my job as efficiently as I have done. And if there's anything that I can do to help the county commissioners or the county, I would greatly, greatly do my best to do that, to the fullest of my ability to represent not only the county, but our Sheriff Tracy Carter, Major Lyle, and Chief Butler in their absence. I greatly appreciate this, and thanks for choosing me, and it is an honor and a privilege. And I would like to thank you that I stand here on behalf of my late, belated father, who worked with San Police Department many years, Eli Harris Petty, Jr., and my cousin, the late Major Roscoe Petty. Thank you so much.
Sergeant Petty, I think you just validated why she's here. And that she met. We have a plaque for you, Carolyn, says Employee of the Month, February 2007. Lee County Government recognizes Carol Petty for going above and beyond her regular duties to be an outstanding employee, signed by the county manager and by myself. Also, the Gold Star Award, you can put this up there beside your radio or wherever you want to put it, as a reminder of being recognized as Employee of the Month. Also, I have a validation here that gives you one day off with pay, and also a pizza from Papa John's, a movie from Movie Gallery, and a gift certificate from Coca-Cola. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think Carolyn is an example of the caliber of employees that we have here in our county. I would like to give every employee Employee of the Month, but of course, it only goes to one individual. Do we have any additional agenda? I believe we have one before you to be added to the consent agenda. Item C in this approval will apply to Smart Start Puds for expanded foods and nutrition programs. Is there a motion that that be added to the consent agenda? All vote in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. It is so ordered. Additions to the regular agenda under new business item E, request from the Board of Education for architectural and engineering fees for the Lee County High School renovation project. Any other additions? All vote in favor of adding this to the agenda, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Is there a motion that the consent agenda be approved with the addition of item C? Any discussion? All vote in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Any more for public comments? Going on to all business, discussion regarding policy for submitting legislative goals and voting procedures, recognize Commissioner Shugger.
In January, there were four of us who had attended the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals Conference in Pinehurst. And I have several concerns with this whole process that I'd like to share with the group and maybe have us think about. First concern is the biennial timeframe. This process starts in August of every even-numbered year and then continues through December. So December, boards are given these goals, and in this case, we had two board members come on, so we were not part of this process. And in January, you know, we elected a voting delegate, and this board had not had an opportunity to look at all of the goals. So I guess my concern is, you know, first of all, the package of goals that's determined by the association, board of directors, the fact that there is no time for discussion, and the fact that we select a voting delegate, but once you get there and you hear the debate, there's, you know, no option to discuss that with your voting delegate. And I feel there's just too many of these goals. And one thing I did learn is that of all 100 counties, every county is completely different. The three priority goals that the State Association had decided on, Medicaid relief, which I think everybody agrees on, but the school construction, I was disappointed with this one, that, you know, Board of Education and county commissioners everywhere are accepting the mandated reduction in class size that the state's handing down. So I was disappointed that our state group didn't question that or didn't challenge that, because there are studies, you know, that show that that is really not a good use of all the money. We have, you know, school construction needs that are higher. And, you know, the whole focus was on getting more money, you know, from this state for additional revenue to meet school facility needs. Again, no discussion of charter schools or how that might be an option for weary taxpayers. So I've come to the conclusion that I think that, and I say this because Amy or Commissioner Stevens is our liaison, that I don't know how much discussion this board had on these goals before they were decided by the state organization. And I really think that as a local board, I would like to see us take a proactive role in maybe coming up with some legislative goals that we present to Senator Atwater, Representative Love, and for us to take a leadership role in our community of addressing some of these issues. And I think I did present two goals, and this was another thing. The process for submitting new goals was not clear. And so I got these goals, and I submitted two, and I had to present them to the steering committee. The first thing they asked me was, "Do you have approval from your local board?" And I said, "Well, no, I just discussed it." So there was no clear-cut method for presenting new goals at the conference, especially for people who are new to boards. So the two legislative goals that I did present was requesting that the General Assembly remove the cap from the number of charter schools that could be authorized in the state of North Carolina, and to redistribute the lottery proceeds. You know, most of that should go to school construction needs, what lottery proceeds we may be getting. So I guess the, my reason for bringing this up is that I'm hoping that after our retreat, when we hear from the Board of Education on some of the data that we requested the last meeting, that we work together with the board, but come up with some innovative ideas for addressing, you know, some of these school construction needs, rather than just always, you know, assuming that we need to build new schools at taxpayer expense. That's all I had, was just...
Okay. We did, as a board, submit a list of legislative goals, and I don't remember what month we passed that, Commissioner.
It was at the beginning of the legislative goals process with the Association, which was in the early fall, maybe September.
And we had a deadline that we had to meet to submit those goals, and I think we had about eight or nine.
Yeah, fourteen or fifteen.
There was ten, and then there was one that was added.
Oh, that's wrong. Would you see that she gets a list of that, those goals, and we just approve?
These are things that we wanted, but tell them what happened when you went into, with your goal.
Well, first of all, after, I was the last one on the list. I waited about an hour and a half after the date was over to go in there. And after being asked if I had full, if I had a resolution from our board, I said, "No." But then, when I stated the two goals that I would like to see added to their agenda, one person says, "Well, do you have data to support this?" And I said, "Yes." I said, "There was a John Locke study that pointed out, the $23 million study the state did on high-priority schools, when it came back and showed that by reducing the class size, there was no greater achievement." And I was really surprised that, as a governing board, I would say that the majority of them had not seen that study. And I think probably the majority of them didn't really understand that charter schools were public schools. And so, is that what you're referring to?
And where are they too, what your recommendations were? Where did it end up?
Ended up being referred to the Education Committee.
That's right, that's right. And they'll be able, you know, start that education, and then it kind of grows from there.
It'll take two years for them to do something with it, right?
No. If, anytime, if a goal is something that they want to go after, and it's going through these processes, you know, it's a continual thing. This is like the whole big, you know, comprehensive thing that most counties can agree on. But no, anytime throughout those two years, if something comes up and they think that this is something we want to go after, then they will look for representation from the Senate, or we could go after our own.
And I think it's interesting to see that just last week, the Wake County Board of Education did join in with the Wake County Commissioners to put on their legislative goals agenda that the state do remove, does remove the cap on charter schools, so.
Right. I think Leonard brings up a great point, though, about our voting delegate. And we had this conversation one time at one of our retreats, where I sit on the State Committee, and I'm, I don't go and poll our board, asking what our board would want me to do, or how they would want me to vote. And what we decided was, since I was an appointed person by the State Board, that they were asking for what my opinion was. If I was, you know, if they just asked us to select somebody, just like we had a voting delegate this last time, then that person is really is representing our board. And, you know, that's one of those things where we are trusting the commissioner that is the voting delegate to vote the way the majority of our board would vote, and not necessarily the way they would vote. But if anybody's got any other opinions on that, well, we've had this discussion before. You know, it's kind of an interesting thing, because you're right, those amendments came up to all those different pieces of legislation or goals, and, you know, you don't have a chance to sit there and confer and decide as a group. So you basically just have to trust that board member knows the wishes of the board that they're representing.
And I'll say this, Amy, that I think it's important that each commissioner, if they have, you know, like of all the ones that we had to look at, as that voting delegate, I think it's important that the, you know, entire board of commissioners, if they have an issue with, you know, a particular one or something like this, I think it's important to have them contact the, either the chairman or the voting delegate, and let that, you know, let that issue be known. If, before, you know, the actual voting takes place, and I know it was rushed down there that day. They rushed us in there and got us seated and everything, and we really didn't have any time to sit down and talk about any specific one.
And a lot of times, you don't know until you hear the debate. There was only one that I wish we could have talked about, that was the very last one, where they wanted to tack on the extra tax for alcoholic beverages for non-Medicaid-eligible mental health. And as I listened to this, you know, we have a fledgling wine industry in North Carolina now. They've discovered that lands that used to grow tobacco are now good for a particular kind of grape. And when you heard the author of this goal, and then it being debated, it would have been detrimental to our wine industry. And so that's the only one that I wish, and I wouldn't, I didn't really know until I heard the debate on it. So I wish I would have had a walkie-talkies at Linda DeJerry. But, so that's the only thing, is you, sometimes you don't know until you hear the debate on it, when you're actually there. So, and that's, I just, you know, bring this up for future use to maybe refine this process as we go forward.
All right. And I think in the future, as I said, members of the board, you'll be receiving all of the legislative goal endorsements and information from the NCACC. You've only been on the board one month, just a little over a month.
I hadn't been to school the week before, so...
Right. So in the future, I think you will have a chance to have more input on it. Mr. Ramon was our voting delegate, and I believe he supported all of the legislative goals except one. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Shugger, for that information. Moving on to new business, Centennial Committee requests for re-interment of Jacob Gaster on the grounds of Lee County Courthouse, recognize Dr. Sadler. And I would say that Harvey Gaster is here also with her.
Chairman Brown, members of the Board of Commissioners, the Lee County Centennial Committee and the special adjutant Gaster respectfully seek the approval of the Commissioners for re-interment of Jacob Gaster on the grounds of the Lee County Courthouse. This ceremony to be held on Sunday afternoon at 2:00, April 29.
All right. If I have any questions, Ms. Sadler, I have one. One of the legal steps that you have to go through to enable you to do that.
Let's speak to that. We've been working with Bob Hoyts, Chip Haight. We've been working with these two gentlemen on your board, and they have gone through, so far as we understand, all of the groups. We had a meeting Friday, and everything is on the go.
Well, I'm very, really, I'd like Mr. Hall to have some input to this exhuming, Mr. Gaster. I believe there's some legal ramifications concerned in that.
These have been met. It's been done by Bridges and Cameron. The undertakers will be, they'll be the ones who will do this. They furnish the vault and other things. That, Bob Hughes, those are the people, except being done that way, it's legal. So he's telling me, Mr. Hall, you know.
Well, my reference is disturbing the grave that now exists.
Right. It's going to be, so it was going to have to be moved anyway, wasn't it?
The grave will be destroyed when the development is done.
Right.
Any other questions or concerns?
With this, I mean, knowing where he's buried, will there, that's going to be a development there? Is there going to be any type of marker or anything there, or, you know, stating where he was buried, you know, since the war? And knowing we're going to have this re-interment down here at the courthouse, will there be any type of marker there where he was originally buried?
I couldn't answer that. It would be good if it was, could be done, but when he's moved, his private property and what, then...
I think that would probably be up to the developer, which would be chose to do that.
We are also, may I say, working with the DAR, and I suspect there will certainly be some kind of reference to the original grave site.
What about the, have you selected the site at the courthouse where the grave will be located?
Well, one of them is the hall on the Herbivore Island. It was there probably a year ago, so. There's plenty of space there. Out there around the building somewhere.
But if there are any perpetual care needs or anything associated with that, I would think that certain, and I have no doubts about what you've done, that Mr. Hall would want to clear with the State Cemetery Commission and all that before we proceed any further and get all the details.
I think it probably might come back before this vote, because it's a result of a development, and they have to give it approval. But I'll double check, though.
All right. And that was what I was touching on, that there might be some legal aspects to it. Of course, the Cemetery Commission would know that. Okay, what do we want to do about this item this morning? Do we go ahead and approve it with the stipulation that the Cemetery Commission be contacted, and also to make sure that all the legal ramifications are satisfied?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Any further discussion?
I would ask that we also remove the ground and see exactly where it is going to be located, or where we can locate it, if it can be done at all.
Well, we can be, if you can, I mean your motion to say that the commission would have a right to inspect the site where it's going to be located.
I said what?
Is that okay, Robyn? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed, say no. It is so ordered. Thank you, Dr. Sadler, and thank you, Mr. Gaster.
Could I add, for your information, the reason we have moved the date, considering it is finally approved, to April, is to coincide with the Spring Militia mustering at the house in the Horseshoe. We are hoping to bring over many of the people who will be there to participate in this event.
The reenactor, yeah.
Roughly how many attend at the house in the Horseshoe? I've heard it's quite a...
How many attend that have been at the house?
There are quite a few. I've never been, but I've been a faker, but I've never been a reenactor. I just, I couldn't all answer that. There's quite a few, it's a pretty big gathering.
I understood it was right, Lord, with them, they have each year.
Well, I've been, and they do, they have people there from all over. And I thought maybe the date, April 29th, was a good date, because that's my birthday.
Don't remember the proper way.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You overcooled that.
Actually, not very many. Actually, that's not, as funny as it might seem, I'd like to know, after, while you're doing this research, what other persons might qualify for that same kind of consideration for the future. I understand this, this particular situation, certainly I have no opposition to it, but once you open the gate, I think you better find out what else, who else might qualify, and what this board plans to do for the future.
I believe it might necessitate us coming up with a policy after the research is done, just to have it on record.
May I please speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Gaster.
I'd look, it looks better than 40 years for another revolutionary soldier whose grave is known, and this is the only one, and this was quite fortunate. I killed him, put a marker there in 1939, and she was one, of course, who told me about that. I saw it 30 years later when she told me, but I do not know of another, I don't think anyone knows of another revolutionary soldier who is, who we know where his grave is.
Thank you. All right, we move on now to the recommendation from the Planning Board, I believe Althea is going to give us that.
That's all, you do understand, that's not the only person I've talked to.
Good morning, Althea.
Good morning, Chairman Brown, and members of the Board of Commissioners. By January 22nd, the Board of Commissioners along with the Planning Board held a public hearing on an application by Mary Gooffrey to rezone from residential agricultural district to highway commercial district, approximately 1.16 acres of land located on the east side of Old Jefferson Main Highway. At the public hearing, Mr. Gooffrey spoke in favor of this request, and no one appeared in opposition to the request. The Planning Board by unanimous vote recommends that the Board of Commissioners approve this application as requested. this application as requested.
So, all right, motion been made to approve this rezoning. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Approved unanimously. Are you gonna do the next item also?
Yes.
The Cooper Ridge.
Copper Ridge, right? It's Copper Ridge, right. Yes, next item is the consideration of preliminary tract of Copper Ridge subdivision, a new residential subdivision located in the Deep River Community, the north eastern portion of Lee County. The property is owned by Cooper Ridge, Copper Ridge Development, L.L.C. I'm sorry. The servicer is Donald E., the engineer is Ken Wrights and Associates. And the tract is comprised of seventy-one point sixty-one acres of land and zoned residential agriculture. Again, this property will be developed into a residential subdivision consisting of fifty-three lots. There is some open space noted on the map, and some of that will be used for entrance signs, and there will be a bus stop located on the tract, and that was requested by the School Maintenance Department. The open space will be owned and maintained by a homeowners association. The subdivision as presented proposes one entrance. The ordinance requires two entrances once you get thirty or more lots. The one entrance in this development is mainly due to the limited amount of street furniture in the tract. The owners are proposing a subdivision exception to allow the development as presented with one entrance. Section six-three-six of the Unified Development Ordinance provides four subdivisions exceptions where the Planning Board and Government Board finds that hardships exist from the regulations of the ordinance. They may ask for a variance or an exception upon recommendation of the Planning Board. So this will maybe approve this with that exception. Streets into this development will be designed to NCDOT standards, they're public streets. Public water will be extended into the development, and each lot, of course, will have its own private onsite septic system. There is some flood hazard areas on the property. The development has been designed to minimize the flood areas there and also any wetlands. I think there was a few wetlands, so it has been designed to minimize any impact on the wet areas. To give you a vicinity of where this is, if you know where Captain Rod Sullivan Road is, the property is directly across from Captain Rod Sullivan Road, and it's actually owned by Van Rose and Jamie Teal. The Planning Board vote by a unanimous vote that the Board of Commissioners approve this new residential subdivision as presented, and they also recommend that the Board grant the variance to allow one entrance into this development.
What is it approved?
Okay, heard the presentation, and we have a motion to approve the C-O-P-T-E-R.
That's the copy, isn't it?
It's in the paperwork, in your book, it's spelled correctly.
Another question. You mentioned a school bus stop. Is that customary or mandatory, or how is that? I don't recall hearing one in the past, and something similar.
No, we have not had such a request in pass. But we now, with the Unified Development Ordinance, we have a technical review committee that is comprised of the engineering partners in regards to water, the NCDOT, the school board, and environmental health and the secretary of state agencies. We meet and everyone look at the map, and they make suggestions or recommendations. And it was more of a suggestion. Since it is a large development, they thought it would be done if they had a bus stop. Have the kids together at one central location.
If they do that, does that mean the bus does not turn in there? If you didn't want your child to be at the bus stop because it was, your house was on the very end, does that mean the bus doesn't go in there when you have the bus stop and you get out with all those approvals?
The bus will go to the bus stop, and it should be there. That is what I understand.
And, you know, I can understand why the configuration of this land, you know, makes it so that it would be very difficult to have a second entrance, but I just wonder how many developers, you know, look at all the land sites, and they buy that extra pack of land right away so that they have two entrances, so that they are complying with the ordinances? And, you know, do we say after this that it doesn't matter? If you have one for the entrances, we'll just make sure, you know, you just have it with one. So I just wonder what kind of precedent are we setting? Was that conversation a part of the discussion?
I think the timing of the purchase of this property was considered prior to the new ordinance, because before we had had the regulations regarding the two entrances into the development, and this property was already purchased at the time that we adopted the new ordinance. I do understand that the owners are negotiating with some of the adjoining property owners, and may eventually put in a second entrance if they can acquire the property. But in this case, they only had that limited amount of road fund.
Do we know what size worth of houses these are?
No, no, we have not discussed the housing types. I do know that they will be site-built, of course.
Let me go back to the bus stop for a second. The superintendent's back here. Since this is not really mandatory, and it's just a recommendation, and they follow that, does that change the rights of the parents who live further back in the subdivision? Or do you know? That's the superintendent, he knows.
Mr. Reeves, Reed Kagle, who sits on this committee, contacted me after the meeting indicating that they had an interest in setting up a bus stop, but Reed did not commit to bus stop or bus stops. He made, no decision was made at the time as to where we would be stopping our school buses. I'm not sure if that helps. We've not even gotten in there to see, to see if you can even turn buses around yet. But the.
Well, in some cases, and I think you mentioned, Mr. Kagle, don't he map out the route that the bus takes?
Yes, sir.
So he would, he would really have the opportunity to say, well, we're, we need to have more than one bus stop. We need to have a bus stop at the end, and then perhaps one as you go in or whatever.
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, this board has been very good in recent, well, since I've been here, in providing plats of the subdivisions for us so that we can examine what's happening. But Reed contacted me, and as I said to Mr. Reeves, he contacted, would we object to bus stops being established? Now, again, depending upon where children live, reside, I think we're gonna have to continue to look at where it is we stop unless we bump into some private roads.
Yeah, and that's what I was referring to, you know? And of course, it changed from year to year.
And the Board of Education has not taken a stance at all on establishing bus stops at one location for subdivisions.
Althea, is this something that the, that might be looking at to amend to go into the UDA? So far as, you know, subdivisions of this type, implementing this into the UDA? And as far as bus stops?
We have not discussed that.
Well, I'd say it changes from year to year as the kids grow up and start driving, and they don't catch the bus, and they move to another location. So I think the bus routes change from year to year according to the need for picking up the children. Any other questions? I believe we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Reeves to approve this.
One other question. Speaking about the runoff and everything, and it being in, you know, areas of, you know, flood area, were there, are there retention ponds or anything being put in to retain that water? Or where does that water go?
Well, I'm sure when they develop the site, they will use the best natural practices, and they will include all of those safety measures as they grave design.
Well, since there's some wetland involved in it, probably they will be instructed on how to handle it. All those in favor of the motion that's on the floor to approve, say aye. Any opposed, say no. It's so ordered. Thank you. And again, I simply do give.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is discussion revenue options. This is information that we received from Mike Cross, who is our area or zone representative of the Northern Kalana County Commissioner Board. And Ms. Stevens can address this.
Well, what I did when I saw this was think about this bulletin that had just been sent out by Tan Hitchens Association, and it is the third pair drive where they addressed what the House Select Committee decided to do. And indeed, it says they voted unanimously to reject the proposal that would allow counties to impose impacting and impactful taxes for school construction needs. And also, I just want to read that. The proposal also would have authorized all counties to enact public facilities ordinances, which is another thing we discussed. And I also thought, if you read on down, the committee did vote to approve allowing counties to enact a half-cent sales tax for school capital needs, but that tax would have to be cast by the government. So obviously, they are looking to see what the counties are asking for, and they are going ahead and making those recommendations. Now, Mike Cross, you know, his representative is Joe Hackney, and it says on this third sheet, number page thirty-two, that Joe Hackney is going to be a part of reintroducing the bill. This is something they asked for. This is something that the county commission as a whole has asked for, because what the county commission association wants to see is, if certain counties have the ability to tax their citizens a certain way because it works for their particular need, then other counties ought to have that same authority. So, you know, I don't have a problem endorsing this. This is something that we may want to take, may want to take a look at at some point in time. And you see what it means to Lee County if you look at his figures. And I asked him where he got them, because he's been working on this for well over a year. But he got the county commissioners' opinion, they helped him. So they're probably pretty accurate. So anyway, just want you to kind of have a heads up on where the registration is looking at. There's also going to be some other people that are going to be going a different route. For Joe Hackney, may I have made that whole promise before he was raised? So is he asking?
My understanding that what we're being asked to do this morning is to just endorse this legislation that gives every county in the state the right to do this. We're not voting to do it ourselves. There are some counties who already have this. I have a motion.
Does this include opposing for a referendum?
I don't see different ones. They authorized the one percent transfer fee. I don't think that they don't have to have a referendum, but I sent wood, or just penny wood.
Well, they could attach it to it. I mean, just, you know, very easy to say, if you're a voter, if you're a citizen's woman. So, I mean, you don't have any guarantee that they won't attach that to what you, you know.
Well, I think we have the right to call for a referendum to do this if there's any board at that particular town saw it to go in this direction.
Well, I certainly respect the rights of other counties to explore revenue options that are right for them. Personally, I am not in favor of a land transfer tax for Lee County. And as I understand this, this is gonna be a one percent tax on all existing transfers. So that means all existing homeowners, you know, whether they've been there for ten years, twenty years, or whatever, the buyer will pay a one percent tax on that. When it comes to new subdivisions, it's my understanding when a developer gets a plat okay that it's the developer's responsibilities to get the roads in there, to get the utility hookups, they add that into the price of the lots, and then they turn it over either to the city or to the state, depending whether it's in the city or county. To assume that all new subdivisions are going to impact our public schools, there's an area, you know, a group of people we want to attract to Lee County. That's the retired baby boomers. They got the money to spend in our retail sector. A lot of them are professionals who become involved in our civic clubs. So to assume that all new subdivisions are gonna have people moving in that are going to impact our school enrollments is a faulty assumption. And I just think that, you know, I'm not gonna tell other counties what's best for them at this point in time, what I know about the land transfer tax. No, I'm not in favor of it for Lee County.
Hi, Leslie. We're not voting for or against the one percent tax for Lee County. We're just voting to give every county in the state the same right as other counties. This is kind of concerning to other things. The one percent sales tax that we support, and ask our legislators to approve. I think if it passes, it will give the right to every county in the state to do that. That would be by referendum. Actually, the citizen would vote the tax on themselves.
Personally, I like the option of having it, not that we use it, but you might be able to use it. And you never know what situations are gonna change for Lee County ten, fifteen years down the road. Maybe we have a big influx of track builders that we want to slow down, or you never know. And the only option we have right now is to raise mobile property taxes. And that's dictated by the state, and a lot of people really don't realize that. But, you know, for us to have more options in our bag is, I mean, that's just my personal opinion, not that I would support land transfer taxes, but just having that option is, is another tool for us at the local level. Whereas would they make that do that several?
Well, they can give other counties the right to do it if they wanted to do it. About your motion.
I need to find out from you if there's, you're not using the resolutions in here.
No. Probably they're asking us, did it really, to contact our legislatures, yes, I'm. Tell them that we should lower these.
The bottom tells the action we're gonna take is to send pending bills and request a legislation and reduce the bill for your revenue option preference. You've already done that one set. You need to get the senior bill.
They're gonna attach this to the one percent.
You know, if we decide that we just want to go up to the one percent, and then we see that we're not gonna be successful with that, and we see that this one's still out there, then what we can do is ask our representatives to go after this one, and we can do both.
They're completely separate, right? Because I think that this one's. But they try to tie them together.
Okay, I had heard the motion.
I move that we ask for this ability, and should we need it in future years.
Your other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Okay, item D, discussion reference meeting.
Before you move on.
All right.
Now, tell them what you're going to do.
I think what all we're going to do is just inform Mr. Love and Mr. Atwater that we support this legislation, giving the right to every county. We don't, we don't want them to draw the bill for us. Then they plus to do.
I think there are seven counties that have the ability right now, and some of them have the ability and they haven't utilized it. The ones that have are glad that they have. Camden County is one of them, who is all of a sudden, who's a very poor county, they didn't have a lot of people moving in, so they want to see in the benefits of it. Then all of a sudden, Dare County is filled up, everybody's moving to Camden County because they got waterfrontage, and they are so glad they've got it in place. So, you know, you just, I think to be prepared for the influx is just a smart thing.
I don't have a problem with being prepared. I'd just like to know specifically what we're going to be asking the legislators or our delegation to do, so that I'm clear. I don't want any misrepresentations being here supporting. The idea that other counties have that option to include Lee County is fine. Beyond that, I want to know what we're doing.
And that's all we do.
All right.
And I'll write a letter to Representative Love and Representative Atwater saying just that.
Because I really think that if we're going to start talking about exercising options, then we ought to allow the public an opportunity to have a discussion about it.
And if there ever comes up that we want to put this in action, we can do it by referendum. It'd be up to the board how to do it.
And if we send, if we, if we adopt the resolution and send it out, for example, let's send the signed copies. I feel more comfortable. If you read these, these are just the blank, unsigned versions. I'd rather see the signed version.
Do we have to have a resolution, Mr. Hall, or we can survive just a letter, but it's called?
Do we have to have a resolution? Do you all consider it?
Do we have to have a resolution? I think the rest is we have it the next board meeting.
The next board meeting, we will bring it back. We've already voted to support it. So we've got a resolution, bring it back, and we can look at it. I think this is what we're sending forward. And Mr. Reed?
Yes, sir.
Question number, a meeting scheduled for March, and I think that this meeting is going to have to be moved from the date specified along the calendar, which is March the fifth. And some of us will be in Washington, March the fifth. And I'm suggesting we be having a meeting on the nineteenth. Is that correct? And I think someone has suggested that we have it at nine o'clock, three, but it would have been.
That's going to be the nineteenth of February.
Oh, okay.
I need to have, you know, I'm biased at the board.
I know you said the nineteenth, I didn't know which month you're talking about. Okay, is it satisfactory for three o'clock on the nineteenth of March? And we have a little bit of hearings, we'll do it on that day. Three o'clock. All right, we move on now to item E, which was.
Excuse me?
I'm still needing to ask that our next meeting, which is on the nineteenth of February, be changed to nine o'clock on the fourth, so that I could attend this. That's February.
Right.
And evidently, it's because it's only a day, it's following the same day. So it'll be the nineteenth, which is the month.
You're not rescheduling the day, but you just want the time changed.
That's right, the time change from three o'clock to nine o'clock.
Do you have any other hearings this month?
Well, actually, the time change will be discussed at the end of this hour.
Well, we'll have to have a group.
Do we have to have a group?
Well, we can have a meeting, but we'll have to recess till that ninth in Redwood Dean, seven o'clock for the public hearing.
I would appreciate that. I would really want to attend a meeting.
Will you make the motion?
Attend what meeting?
Our board meeting. I would just love to have a chance to turn nine o'clock, because I will, I would miss the public hearings, but I would miss the whole board meeting.
I understand about our board, what meeting are you trying to attend? You say you can't be here after three o'clock?
Mm-hmm. That's right. So, you know, I'm just asking for consideration.
You're asking why, why you want to?
I thought you said you had some other meeting you had to attend.
I did, I did. And it's a personal meeting.
Okay. That was a simple, that was a good answer question.
Is that a factor to everyone to change the time from three o'clock to nine o'clock?
On the nineteenth of February.
Nineteenth of February. All right, we move on to item E, we've added requests from the Board of Education for architectural and engineering fees for the Lee County High School renovation project amount eighty thousand dollars. Recognize the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The Board of Education, with support from the Board of Commissioners, under Board of Commissioners, would like to enter into an agreement with Jimmy Height, Architect of Height Associates, to conduct a facility study, facility plan, device plan, to allow for the renovations at Lee County High School, and also provide us, you and the Board of Education, with cost estimates for said renovation. Mr. Height, as in conversation with me, indicated that the eighty thousand dollars would roll into the overall architectural, overall architectural fees for the project. Obviously, this is tied to a bond, a successful bond referendum. We have three hundred thousand square feet at Lee County High School that we need to consider for renovation. We have had Mr. Height spend time on the property at Lee County High School, going through all fourteen buildings. You can't, someone unassociated with this property cannot envision the immense square footage, if you will, due to, due to the three hundred thousand square feet being spread out across fourteen buildings. Mr. Height and I, along with two members of the board, have had some informal conversations. The scope needs to, the scope of the project needs to include the improvement of the instructional spaces, salvaging all or as many buildings as possible. And our goal would be to salvage all the buildings, although an initial study submitted to the board in March of two thousand and three suggested otherwise, but we have talked with Mr. Height about trying to salvage all buildings. We've also tried to talk, we've also talked with Mr. Height about the, about efforts to improve safety and security on campus. Again, a building of fourteen, a campus of fourteen buildings does present some challenges. So at this point in time, what we would ask, I would ask on behalf of the Board of Education is that you authorize funding in that, any eight thousand dollar study to provide this community with the necessary information to move forward on a massive renovation on the campus.
Did I understand you correctly, we're just advancing this eighty thousand, and if the bond issue is approved, then we get reimbursed?
That will be part of the negotiations for the architectural fees for the project. Our intent would be, obviously, to employ Jimmy Height and his organization. Now, the one thing I'm not sure that is, might be understood, is that architectural fees for renovations tend to be slightly higher than renovation for new construction, so I would not want any misunderstanding once we entered into negotiations with Height Associates. That has been my experience in the past, and it's been the experience of other superintendents with whom I've spoken. Mr. Pass?
How did you happen to pick Mr. Height? I mean, is that done arbitrarily, or did you bid this job out, or what?
No, sir, there's legislative action that allows you to continue working with an architect who you have on site doing other work for you.
Dr. McCormick, I'm coming in here, but I'm looking at the capital improvements program. And for the Lee County renovations, you know, part of what's in here, total package of fourteen million, I'm just curious as to, you know, what the detail is for coming up with this figure. Do we have drawings? Have we done a needs assessment? Is this just a ballpark figure somebody pulled out? What was the process for determining this, the overall amount?
There is a study that was submitted to an architectural firm in March of two thousand and three. Matter of fact, two studies were submitted, one to, from New High School, Southern Lee High School, to set the educational specifications for that building. And second was a cursory look at the property at Lee County High School. That particular plan suggested roughly ten million dollars, eight point seven, of which was for actual construction. Candidly, in four years, we have sustained tremendous growth in such products as steel, plastics, and other construction materials. What the board did was increase that ten million dollar projection two years ago to fourteen million, with the understanding that facility study, and you'll find two years ago, a facility study, as well as a facility study in the current plan, suggested prior to spending any money and really agreeing to any price, the fourteen million came as a guestimate, if you will, or an estimate of how prices might have increased in three years from two thousand and three. So it was an estimate with the understanding that we needed a facility study, and that has been the Board of Education's position, that prior to committing to any particular dollar value, the commissioners in the Board of Education could, should conduct a very broad study of the campus.
So this one that was done in March two thousand and three, we paid for that, or?
Ten thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. And it is a plan that measures square footage. It talks about raising four different buildings and constructing new buildings. It does not talk in terms of instructional specifications, did not make recommendations for changes in your career technical labs, did not anticipate the growth of the local area network to support the computers, did not recognize the growth in numbers of computer labs, did not recognize changes that need to be made to science labs that have been in place since nineteen fifty-two. So while it talked about some structural integrity, it did not make any significant comments about instructional changes that had occurred in fifty-one years. And part of that will occur, I'm not sure if we forwarded a letter to you from Jimmy Height, he spoke in terms of five or six portions of the total scope of this eighty thousand dollar project. It'll look different than what we received in two thousand and three.
Has Mr. Height had previous experience doing these kinds of evaluations for schools?
Yes, sir.
Yes?
Yes, sir.
So you're confident in the product you're going to get?
Our confidence, Mr. Kelly, comes from the standpoint of working with him on the middle school, the new middle school, how he presented himself when we first interviewed candidates for the architectural and engineering services. Also, our confidence in the way he has been working with the people at Floyd Alnite Children's Center, his relationship thus far, although in its infancy, his relationship with the general contractor on both projects, and again, talking with people before we employed him for the initial project. So we've developed a personal confidence in, you know, supported in some by other people's comments.
Were they connected to school systems or private sector or what?
The people I spoke to, sir, were in rural school districts. Has done a lot of work.
Which counties?
A lot of work in the stretch of land from Raleigh to Greenville. He's worked in Pitt County, areas of Greenville. We were excited about, I didn't personally see the building, we had a team go look at two of his facilities. We were excited about what we'd seen in his schools firsthand.
Did you speak with him about what you're asking him to do here? Is that what? The request you're making here, have you checked his references for that type of work?
I don't know, no, I don't, sir.
Well, I believe this study is going to have to be done by someone. We had had our first meeting with Love, the local government commission Friday, just presenting them preliminary data on what may lie ahead of us concerning referendum. And we got to know what needs to be done and what can be salvaged and what can't be by an expert.
I have a problem with the whole process. You know, coming from the private sector, you know, I'm used to needs assessments and big plans, and I, I'm just a little uncomfortable, because I feel that that overall planning process and needs maybe has not been done up to this point. And another disturbing thing is, you know, the article that was in the paper over the weekend about how Lee County has the third highest dropout rate in the state. And so, you know, I think there's some taxpayers who're saying, okay, we're putting all these monies into these two high schools, you know, the dropout rate, and I have a hard time buying the reasons in the paper that it's because we've been overcrowded. I, personally, I don't.
I can't take, I can't take that comment. Mr. Bryant nor I recognize that comment, Mrs. Shurk. As a matter of fact, I would dare say, last year, when we led the pack, if you will, when we came to adequate yearly progress, and how well we did on North Carolina ABCs in two thousand and four, two thousand and five, more, more schools making adequate yearly progress than any other school in the surrounding twenty-one school districts. And the number two behind Chapel Hill and Carboro, when it came to the ABCs, we took it for granted. And we have not made very public note about some of the challenges, although I believe the editorial board did in Saturday's newspaper, the increase in certain subgroups of students. We've not offered defenses, we've not offered explanations or reasons. What we have tried to do is put in place a massive staff development process that is treating not only math, reading, but also the social studies and civics that the editorial mentions, and writing. So this community, when it slipped to the middle of the pack, if you will, in adequate yearly progress, and to the bottom in ABCs, has committed to working with all subgroups and working with all student populations, and merely stating that these are our expectations rather than excuses. From the standpoint of facilities, if we were to step into a science lab circa nineteen fifty-two and try to deliver the kinds of activities we need in physics, chemistry, physical science, and biology, we're ill-equipped just in the sciences. I do share with you a concern. I share your concern when we talk about planning. This community has been planning for the renovations of Lee County High School for years and has not spoken very much about it publicly. What you find is a facility study that I think is going to give us that. Once we have the facility study, if we collectively are not satisfied with the impact that a massive amount of money spent on the campus can realize, if we're not satisfied with that impact, then we have to stop the process. But I would agree with you, this process of planning has been ongoing for a number of years. This study will merely formalize it. But we're in agreement when it comes to dropout. I don't like being in the same paragraph of Vance County and one other, I've lost the name of the other county.
I guess I'm a little nervous about an architect determining what our instructional needs will be. And as far as the sciences, you know, I don't know whether there is any facilities at CCC that can be shared. I don't know the number of students we're talking about here. You know, there's just a lot of unknowns here. And, you know, I like to see a plan, and I like to know that it's well analyzed and it's substantiated.
The architect won't make instructional decisions. He is familiarizing himself with the structural side of this, because I would dare, if we take the plan delivered in March of two thousand and three, the immediate question would be, why would we take down the science? two thousand and three, their immediate question would be, why would we take down the science building and the foreign, and the foreign language building and the old gym as it's affectionately called, and the library annex, and build a new facility? And I've questioned that as has this current Board of Education. Why would we do that before we know if those buildings are structurally sound? And that's where Mr. Height and Mr. Pittman began their study. They need to assure this community what is structurally sound and what is not structurally sound. What it is, our professionals need to tell us what it is we need to do instructionally. And I, I think Mr. Height, in my observations, did a masterful job working with the staff in small groups as we developed the instructional plan for the new middle school, likewise at Floyd All Night. So, but again, once we have this delivered to us as a community, I think then we ask some of the tougher questions. But I, we need this information so that we can have that discussion and that analysis.
Okay. I believe it stated that this, what we're being asked to do today is just to appropriate eighty thousand dollars for architectural and engineering fees.
Which budget here?
This one. We're going to have to do it immediately.
Mr. McCormick, is he going to be doing this the same time he's working on another school?
He has committed a team to work on this, yes, sir. This will provide us engineering, I'm sure.
That's sort of moonlight, Jim.
I'd say it's stretching himself across three projects, yes, sir.
I have a comment. I think it was what Robert said, and it was going to personally ask, and that was, how much have this architect done this kind of work for? And when you have a facility that's got that many buildings and it's all strewn out and to, and I just remember the construction of a new school behind Broadway School and all the, you know, orange fencing and all that, and the kids were supposed to stay behind here, the trailer was set up and all that. I just wonder if that really needs to be a huge consideration, and I'm sure it has been by you all, that they are very familiar with having to try to do all these things while our campus is still continuing.
We've already talked about the staging of how you would move modular units in, how you would fence off, how you would secure it. Candidly, I'd probably go beyond the orange fencing. I started looking at some chain link fencing just from a safety and security standpoint, as you put together an academic village, modular units. As far as Mr. Height's conducting facility studies, we've talked about studies, all right? I, I've not spoken with people with whom he has worked on those topics. Our personal relationship as, our professional relationship, I guess I should say, in what he's done for us thus far, has, I put him up in that exemplary category.
So the eighty thousand dollars would basically take the place of the hundred thousand dollars we budgeted for two thousand and eight for the feasibility study, or?
We had asked for it in two thousand and six, seven. And as we programmed collectively, the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education, I think it was moved out a year. But yes, it's for the future year, yes.
I might want to ask if the manager's standing on it.
That's my understanding precisely, I'm sure.
We think, we think before you consider spending large amounts of money, you need this study.
Well, let me get my one point clear. If he is here, this reads that you're already hired to provide a facility plan. That's what this says.
He knows that I'm here to see you this morning, sir.
I'm just reading what it says. Jimmy Height has been hired to provide a facility plan. And, and my question again is...
I'm not sure what you're reading there. Is that a letter from me?
No, sir. That's the communication from the office.
Has Mr. Height, in fact, already been?
He has been to the building Thursday, Friday, and Monday of the prior weekend. If you don't fund it, he's finished. No documents have been signed, Mr. Reeves.
All right. Then my other question again is, whether he has or hasn't, you know the Board of Education, have you checked any references related to his providing facility plans?
We checked his references extensively before we hired him.
For facility plans?
No, sir.
Okay, now I'm clear.
I thought, I thought I answered that question.
Well, you may have, but I want it to be clear. I want it to be very clear to me when I get that answer. And, and it just seems to me, it's sort of like one to the pain specialist or a doctor, there are certain situations you want to know that this person has performed the type of service of it, if you're going to engage him with him. And I would think that at the scale that you're talking about, that we would at least check his references for facility plans.
We conducted a broad reference as to all of his services before he was employed by the Board of Ed as an architect. And he rose above the pack in every area, sir. Did we ask him at the time about facility study? We asked him about facility planning.
Okay. All right.
Mid manner, where are we going to get this eighty thousand dollars?
We'll more than likely have to come from bounds.
Out of bounds. And with the other, we need to have the understanding that, that the county will be reimbursed the eighty thousand dollars if the referendum is approved.
I'm not sure how that wording works. I mean, I wouldn't say reimbursed. We're going to come to you for the architectural fees too, sir. I mean, however that works, it's going to be part of the architectural package.
The check won't be written.
I hear you.
Well stated.
Well, I knew that we approved this eighty thousand dollar application.
Any further discussion? All those in the papers say aye. Any folks say no?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Chester, one, pass.
Mr. Superintendent, by the way.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes, sir. Would you check on information regarding the kids who don't get to take the books, or the shortage of books?
There's no shortage of books, Mr. Reeves. What, what we have in place is a decision made on several occasions by teachers and principals to buy enough books for classroom sets, and put the remainder of the funds into instructional technology and other materials. That's going to be part of a communication we're going to deliver to you prior to February twelfth, your retreat. But in conversations with, and this, I believe, has come from the middle school, unless there's more information I need. In meeting with Mr. Travis Taylor and Mr. Paige Murphy last year, prior to the approval of their textbook purchase, they had to specify how they were going to use the instructional monies coming from the state that are typically called textbook funds. Those textbook funds, as I've said, can be distributed across other purchases that are instructional in nature. They, with their staff, discussions, staff decided to buy classroom sets so that they continued to increase technology in their schools. Again, a letter was exchanged between superintendent and principal, recognizing the building level decision to accomplish this task. Now, I have been assured by Mr. Taylor and by Mrs. Farah, the current principal at Wesley Middle School, that if a student needs a book for a, for a longer period of time beyond the classroom use, where they have access to the book firsthand, in their hand, they can make that request. So, but again, it's a decision that has been made by a group.
All I'm asking for is a written explanation you just gave, so that I'll have something to refer to. Because not every kid has technology at home, not every kid has means of getting to the library or some other facility to use it and collect reason. If they don't have a book, they have an extreme disadvantage in my opinion.
Well, the point you make about technology was part of the decision and the discussion, the ultimate decision, youngsters not having access to technology beyond the building also. But again, as Mr. Taylor said at the last meeting we attended, that'll be in the form of a communication, I believe, that was started when Mrs. Shook and Mr. Smitherson contacted me about the textbook issue. And we're going to lump that together for all six or seven points, Mr. Brown, in your letter to Mr. Taylor.
I started to say, Mr. Reeves, I wrote a letter, and a copy of it was in your Friday mailing, requesting more information than just that.
Has to do with enrollment, minority subgroups, a variety of tasks. And rather than giving it to you piecemeal, Mr. Brown, Mr. Taylor, I think is going to just sum it up bullet form for you, along with the narrative, Mr. Reeves.
Well, I, I, there were several bullets in that letter that need to be addressed.
Yes, sir. Right. Thank you all very much, Martin.
Gayman, there are bullets and blanks. Well, I understand if we get it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I'll just brief the board on a couple items. For your information, in anticipation of receiving a resolution from the Board of Education on the thirteenth of February, we did, Mr. Brown, Mr. Minter, Mr. Hoala, myself, and Mr. Cole attended a meeting with various Board of Education folks to, with the local government commission to start a pre-application phase for an anticipated bond referendum for renovations at the high school. And we have a projected calendar of events, which we'll send out when you're coming Friday correspondence, just to let you see firsthand the things that we must do as a county leading up to a bond referendum, if the Board of Education chooses to seek one on February thirteenth. Also, wanted to call your attention to an item that was in your Friday packet from sideways superintendent, Joe Cherry, which is a status report of something you asked us to do quite a few months ago, and that's create a organization-wide, and hopefully a community-wide environmental stewardship policy that takes into account the practices we use in our energy consumption, in our building practices, our use of recycled products, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, you've got a good status report from Mr. Cherry. I encourage you to read, and I would say that my guess would be at your March nineteenth meeting, we will try to produce a policy for you to adopt. And just to refresh your memory, conceptually, we thought about this policy becoming applicable to all of our constituency agencies, people that we fund, such as the Board of Education, the Community College, or anyone else that may have received special appropriations from us, to make sure that we are leading a conversation of our responsible environmental stewardship. Also, I want to bring your attention into Friday packet as a separate attachment. It was a worksheet that looks like this in anticipation of a conversation at the retreat regarding your county manager search. I perceived two of these completed. It was our aim to get these back from you today. And if you need a copy to complete while you're in the building or during lunch, you'll see Ms. Price. She can handle that. And then, once you complete it, if you'll turn it in to me or Gayman or Ms. Price, I will make sure these things get compiled and ready for your retreat session on Monday.
Are we supposed to sign them?
I think the ones I got are unsigned. I mean, these are...
So I don't think that's necessary.
They're worth a big sign or anything?
And then finally, just as a suggestion, I don't know if we still have time to do this, but if we're moving, or since we're moving our February nineteenth meeting, and just a suggestion, if you want to change the public hearing to a nine AM public hearing, there's nothing to say that you have to have your public hearing at the same time as the planning board. The planning board can still have their public hearing that night, and you could have yours that morning, and then you wouldn't have to recess that meeting, Mr. Brown. That's just a suggestion. If you want to pursue that, we can see if there's still time to coordinate that properly in the newspaper, which I think is fourteen days out. We'll probably skip and make that deadline. Just a suggestion.
We have to advertise?
Yes, sir. We have to advertise regardless. And I think we could probably catch that advertisement before it hits the paper, if that's what you want to do. And that's all I have.
Do your motion, and I believe move the time for a public hearing to be directly after our commission meeting. All those papers say aye. Any folks say no, and so forth.
I've got a question for the manager. He mentioned the school board referendum.
Yes, sir.
That's not, that's not automatic for this board. That's a request.
That's correct.
From, from the other board. And I'm sure this board knows that you first must realize that even if the public desires, you still have to do to make sure you pay for it. So just because it comes before us does not mean we have to approve a bond referendum. Certainly it's funded. Certainly the funding will still have to come from this board. And that decision can be a very, very costly one if you're not prepared to do it.
We've, we've already started to address that, Mr. Reeves, and we've got a starting figure of thirty thousand dollars at the bond referendum cost us. But I believe it's going to be more than that, because at the time we were talking about the thirty thousand dollars, we weren't considering early looking.
I'm speaking beyond the cost of the actual bond referendum. I'm speaking in terms of what you accept when you allow it and it passes, and then it comes on to the books. I think they, the finance director should give us some numbers to let us know what we can afford at this time. Debt service is one of the concerns that I have regarding an additional increase in debt obligation.
I guess there are a lot of unknowns right now. You know, we are searching for a new county manager. We've got a property valuation taking place, budget that's going to require a revenue neutral rate, you know. We've just got a lot of things going on right now. And I, to add, a scoop on, you know, referendum on here puts an awful lot on our plate with an awful lot of unknowns, you know. And I voted in favor for the potential sales tax increase to offset, you know, some of the burden from property owners, not to increase that. So I want to stress that I want to make sure we stay focused in that area too, not to increase both taxes.
Anything else?
Just to address that, we will have a very detailed presentation at the retreat about our ability to afford, and I have a draft of that here that we took to the LGC Friday, that lays out various scenarios, considering potential cost of a renovation to Lee County High School. And it's all in this report, and will be presented to you and the school board next week. Additionally, and concurrently, we are developing a recommended CIP for your consideration, which will also not only show you the ability to afford the high school renovations, but also the other projects that are in your CIP. So we will be giving you considerable financial food for thought in the coming weeks that should paint, in my opinion, a very clear picture of what it will take to do any or all of these projects, including the requisite tax rate. And hopefully, we'll try the consideration of what happens if a one percent sales tax were implemented also. So we have good information for you.
And we had, had a representative from Davenport with us Friday when we met with the local government commission, and he made a presentation. That was, that's what Smithman has a copy of that. And I would say that Davenport and company seem to be very conservative. And if you check their figures and whatever, that will be addressed or given to us at our retreat. We'll be able to make a better judgment than we can today how we've stayed. Mr. Reeves, you have anything further? Lamont?
Yes.
Kathy?
I have one question. David, how are we, where are we in the process of looking for fire marshal replacement for Derek?
We have been receiving applications and have a few. I would say more than we did at this point last time, and should be starting the review of those applications as early as this week.
Because I might have, you know, some of the things that you've put in our weekly about the Deep River, you know, they've got budgets coming up, and it's, I'm on the fire advisory board, so my head is fitting with all this knowledge of how they work and whatever. But, you know, the old saying is sometimes you don't know what you have until it's gone. And I, I developed a really, a respect for Derek and his knowledge. He had a tough job. You know, they seem to, and that fire advisory board is a good makeup of, you know, citizens and fire chief and whatever. So I think they're, they're heading on the right track, but they definitely need somebody to guide the ship.
It's my goal to...
It's my goal to fill that position as soon as possible.
I ask.
Nothing, except the DMV is now applying the county flag.
We've been threatening for it. We've been taking notice.
It's all, hey, we have a closed session called, and we call this closed session official against General Statute, 23 days, 318, dot 11, 8, and 3. Do your motion for going closed, say aye? You opposed, say no, we'll leave in the conference room in 10 minutes. Guess we won't be taking a vote down.